Okay, I'll call this regular council meeting to order at 6:00 PM on August the 22nd. We will begin with the invocation offered by John Standridge of Christ Church Presbyterian, and followed by the pledge of allegiance that will be led by George Barudy. You may stand if you wish, and please make sure your cellphones are off.
Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for this gathering tonight and the gift of being able to participate in our government. We can't pray for our government without first expressing our trust in you, who has the government upon his shoulders. So we pray for our council, you'll give them wisdom. We pray for our citizens, that our participation would exhibit not only self-concern, but concern for our neighbor, that rights would be not only those things that are asserted, but gladly given up for the good of all. We thank you for our staff, Lord, that serves so diligently and often without much credit. We pray that you will bless them in their work, and of course, our first responders and all of our city employees. Lord, we pray that everything that happens tonight will result in joy, not only for constituencies, but really for the entirety of this city, so that there would be a palpable sense of your presence here. And we pray all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for starting us out this evening. Can you hear everywhere? Okay. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Ms. Craig?
Yes, ma'am. We have the Louise Hayes Park Fountain Plaza repairs have been completed and reopened today. The normal operating hours for the fountain are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Movies in the park have two more events in this summer series. Saturday, September 2nd, at Kerrville-Shriner Park, Disney's Muana, sponsored by the Bosworth Company, will start at 9:00 PM. And Friday, September 8th, at Louise Hayes Park, The Jungle Book, sponsored by the Calhoun Foundation, will be shown at 9:00 PM. Registration is open for the Kerrville Triathlon Festival to be held at the end of September. For more information on these events, please call the park's office at (257) 7300. Also, the public is invited to attend the 50-year celebration of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library this Saturday, August 26th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The celebration will include fun and games, food provided by HEB, and music with Ranch Radio. The Friends of the Library bookstore will open for this event, and the Kerr Regional History Center will unveil a new exhibit showcasing the history of the library. Also, this Saturday, August 26th, the Kerrville Fire Department will host a blood drive from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Walmart parking lot, 1216 Junction Highway. It only takes 45 minutes to help save the life of another person. All blood donors will receive a mini physical and a South Texas Blood and Tissue Center t-shirt. For more information or to make an appointment, please call (258) 1206.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other announcements from council? If not, item number two is the Visitors and Citizens Forum. I had no, is that correct, Ms. Craig? I had no applications turned in this evening. So seeing none, I will move on to item number 3A, which is a proclamation recognizing the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Local 3230 for participating in the Muscular Dystrophy Association Fill the Boot Campaign, Always Out There in the Heat. Am I right? It's never cool, never rains. Okay. I'm going to ask A.J. Reed to come forward, if he would, and there's a presentation first that wants, Marlene Browning with the Muscular Dystrophy Association would like to make. Also, Mr. Reed, if you'd like to have the others stand with you. I have a number of you. Steve Boyd Battalion Chief, Billy Williams, Joel Bryant, Sean Pipkin, Arnie Segura, Roy Fawcett, Sarah Noble. Everybody make it? Great.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association of South Texas, we would like to acknowledge and thank you for your hard work in doing the Fill the Boot this year. You guys raised over $29,000 for the South Texas District. And with that, I wanted to present to you a plaque, a token of our appreciation, to Local 3230.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Don't go anywhere, guys. Also, as a matter of commendation, I'd like to read a proclamation from the City of Kerrville to all of you. The City of Kerrville Professional Firefighters Local 3230 exemplifies the most time-honored American ideals of public service and sacrifice, protecting the citizens of our community from tragedy on the home front. And whereas the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Local 3230 members are highly trained and dedicated individuals who demonstrate daily an extraordinary caliber of character and courage in the face of danger, and whereas the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Local 3230 members selflessly donate their time and energy fighting for kids and adults with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases that severely limit muscle strength and mobility by filling the boot each year for MDA. And whereas in the past 13 years, the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Local 3230 has raised more than $266,000 for the Muscular Dystrophy Association for the Fill the Boot Campaign. And whereas the Kerrville Professional Firefighters has endless service to MDA and given so much hope for families fighting life-threatening diseases, now therefore I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, recognize the Kerrville Professional Firefighters Local 3230 for the time and effort spent during the months of May, June, and July for the past 13 years on Fill the Boot Day. Let's give them applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming today.
Item number 3B is a proclamation commending the Buttholesworth Memorial Library, celebrating 50 years. Ms. Bechtel and Ms. Lotz, or whoever all would like to come from.
Can I read one of them?
Yes. And we love the rain. We hope the storm comes and brings rain, but we hope it isn't at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, of all things, right? Okay. Proclamation, whereas the Buttholesworth Memorial Library was opened to the community on August 26th, 1967. Were you here yet? Oh, gosh. Through the efforts of Mr. Yeah, I definitely wasn't. We were babysitting them. Through the efforts of Mr. and Mrs. Howerty Butt Senior, the Friends of the Memorial Library and the community, and whereas the three-story circular native stone steel and glass building, which was to stand as a memorial to the members of the Buttholes and Buttholesworth families, instantly became a treasured asset of the community and a beloved gathering spot for individuals and families. And whereas overlooking the Guadalupe River in the heart of downtown Kerrville, the Buttholesworth Memorial Library offers peaceful space for reading, reflection, and study at the same time that it invites vibrant community interaction. And whereas the Buttholesworth Memorial Library has continuously grown over the past 50 years to meet the changing needs of the community, including providing resources for all ages and bringing library services outside of library walls through programs and digital services. And whereas the Buttholesworth Memorial Library will continue to promote free and open access to information, materials, and services to all residents of the City of Kerrville to advance knowledge, foster creativity, encourage the exchange of ideas, build community, and enhance the quality of life. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Kerrville does hereby commend the Buttholesworth Memorial Library on the occasion of its 50th anniversary, and on behalf of the residents expresses sincere appreciation for its role in the community. And I want to add that we get every month a report from Ms. Bechtel, and Kim, I guess, actually sends it. And you cannot imagine the number of patrons that visit our local library. The activities throughout the summer are just amazing for all ages, and so we appreciate the work that's done. We're excited about the 50 years, and whether it's raining or not, we'll be in or out to help you celebrate. Congratulations. We'll see you on Saturday.
Thanks, Lotz. See you Saturday.
Item number 3C is a proclamation proclaiming September the 1st, 2017, as Dorothy McNeil-Tucker Day. Jim and Wanda Morris and whoever you have accompanying you, members of St. Peter's Episcopal Church, would you come and receive this proclamation if you are here this evening? Appreciate so much. Former Councilman Jim Morris proposing this. It's not often that we do this. We have quite a number of people who turn 90 and over in this community, but rarely are those who commit as much as this lady did to the community. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to meet her. I think the celebration was originally supposed to be for her birthday, is that right? And she didn't quite make it to this birthday, so instead, we're honoring her memory, and we appreciate you bringing this forward. So I'm going to read it this evening. Whereas Dorothy McNeil Tucker has unselfishly given of her time and resources to support the Deedert Center, specifically donating the construction cost of several rooms in the center, generously supporting the Meals on Wheels program, and the recent expansion of the Deedert Center kitchen. Whereas Dorothy McNeil Tucker provided the funds to make possible the construction and operation of the Tucker Hall at St. Peter's Episcopal Church, which many of us use for our social events, including paying down the principal of the debt incurred while serving as a member of the women's group. And whereas Dr. Dorothy McNeil Tucker has provided significant funds to support the construction of Shriner University's Mountaineer Center and other activities of the university. And whereas Dorothy McNeil Tucker made generous contributions to support the recent renovations of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library. And whereas the Kerrville City Council wishes now to recognize the valuable contribution she has made to the entire community prior to her untimely passing on Saturday, August the 12th, 2017. Whereas in grateful acknowledgement of the outstanding and dedicated service rendered by Dorothy McNeil Tucker, a generous local philanthropist who has supported numerous charities in Kerrville, now therefore I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do proclaim September the 1st, 2017, as Dorothy McNeil Tucker Day in the City of Kerrville, Texas, on the occasion of what would have been her 93rd birthday. And here to receive it for her are her longtime friends, Jim and Wanda Morris, as well as those that she contributed to from the Episcopal Church. Would you please thank them for commemorating her memory and her posthumous. I see.
One of the most unselfish women in the whole world was Dorothy Tucker. Longtime friend of my wife and I, and everybody else in the community, whether they knew her or not. She was always there, always ready to listen, and always ready to help. This is one of her best friends, this is Brandy. Brandy was her personal cook, not my wife. This is, my wife couldn't make it today.
She didn't make it, did she?
No. But Brandy's going to be the chef for the celebration on the 1st. And our new pastor at St. Peter's Church is Burton.
Bert Betts.
Bert Betts. I was going to call you Brent, but I stand corrected. Anyway, it's a happy family and a great thing for Dorothy Tucker. And thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Everybody's invited to come to the St. Peter's Hall on the 1st between 5:00 and 7:00?
5:00 and 8:00.
5:00 and 8:00, come and go. It's a reception. She really liked receptions, and she really liked the Tucker Hall. And we had our 85th or 90th celebration there.
And now we're going to do this celebration. So come and join us. Thank you so much.
One more thing. Dorothy did not want a service. And in the planning of her final wishes, I was talking to one of her best friends, Doris Reynolds, who was involved with the hospital for about 30 years, and this flash came over me that we got to honor Dorothy in some way. So she didn't want a service, but we're going to have a celebration. And what we're doing is another fundraiser for Dorothy's charities also. It's a come and go, and all of her favorite charities will be at the table. I'll have a table there, and in lieu of flowers and services, that's what she wished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Councilman. Okay. Item numbers 4A through 4F are on the consent agenda. I'm going to ask that we remove 4E. Are there any others that you wish removed, Council? Anyone? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve items 4A, B, C, D, and F.
Is it moved?
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 4E is to consider taking action to authorize staff to negotiate a professional services agreement with the consultant. We're looking at Kimble Horn for the City of Kerrville New Comprehensive Plan. For those of you who weren't aware of it or didn't see it in the paper, weren't present, we did have, we had a public workshop, and we met in this room, and we met with three candidates who were finalists for this position. And we had numerous discussions with them, all about what services they could offer. It was a request for qualifications. And so I'm going to open it up, and I'm going to ask the council members if you have any comments on our discussion that we had, so that the community will understand what we're doing.
I do.
Please.
The thing that impressed me the most about this consultant was the person on their team who would be in charge of the community input. And she seemed full of enthusiasm, full of ideas, totally dedicated to this. And I think it's the secret of our success with this plan, is to have as many people as possible, as diverse opinions as possible, right from the beginning through to the end of the adoption of the plan.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right about that, Ms. Summerlin. And I also think that they had all of the technical skills in the other people that were going to be there, the project management and all the other discipline, to do everything that we do and completely cover the waterfront. It certainly satisfied me.
I'd like to add what Ms. Summerlin said. That's what stuck out to me was the public outreach. I was really excited about that. It seemed like a pretty energetic group, and I think they'll work well with us.
Yeah, they all presented well, but the part that stood out to me was the presentation of Kimble Horn was aimed at two main things that I thought were pretty important. One, they spent a lot of time explaining, like they've all said, about the community involvement and how that's going to work. Their motto of being, you know, the comprehensive plan not being planned from the consultants but from the community jumped out at me. And then their sort of economic development expertise that was being shown.
That was impressive, too.
As far as, they weren't just telling us opinions, it was going to be based on, they were going to give us information that supported the thoughts behind it, which I really liked.
And I will conclude by saying that they were all three very good candidates, and we did a thorough discussion with all of them. This particular group had already looked at our demographics, which I appreciated. They had already made some suggestions and observations about land uses. They identified people who are here. They looked at particular sites for development. They were familiar with our KEDC studies. Let's see, what else? They planned to increment it in stages. They had river corridor development experience, which I liked, because we'll be looking at that as well. They committed to meeting with us by at least Skype once a week, and I like that as well. And they promised when they develop this to stay with us and hold our hand through the entire process. And to me, that's very important. There's a lot of good thoughts, but being able to implement those and pick up the pieces along the way, I thought was really important. So I will look at this point, unless there's any questions. If not, I will look for a motion to authorize staff to negotiate a professional services agreement with Kimble Horn for the new Kerrville Comprehensive Plan.
I move to approve Kimble Horn.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to authorize staff to negotiate a professional services agreement, is actually what we're.
I'm sorry.
Okay, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that understood? Okay. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Item number 5A is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget for the City of Kerrville. There will be one public hearing. We have had several workshops. We had a presentation by Mr. McDaniel. The proposed fiscal '18 budget is on the website, am I correct, Ms. Yarborough? For your perusal, but unless there are any other comments that you would like to make before I open the public hearing?
No, Mayor, you summed it up very well. We've had the three workshops and then the presentation of the entire budget, and now we're going through the public hearing phase to see if there's any additional input from the citizens, so that you all could then consider that when you begin your readings of the ordinances later on in September.
Okay, so at 6:21, I will open a public hearing for anyone that wishes to speak on the proposed 2018 budget. Anyone? Okay, you've all read it online, and you can pass all the tests in the questionnaires. At 6:21, I will close the public hearing, and we are not required to take action, am I correct on?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, for any of you who do have questions, if you do read it, you're welcome. Mr. McDaniel said to ask him, or Ms. Yarborough, or any number of us online, and we'll be happy to help you the best way we can. Item number 5B is a public hearing on the ad valorem tax rate for tax year 2017 and fiscal year 2018, 2017 and 2018 for the City of Kerrville. Ms. Yarborough?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2018 is 56.25 cents per hundred valuation on property. The preceding year's tax rate was the same amount of 56.25, and this is the ninth year in a row that we have proposed this. The effective tax rate is 55.14, and the rollback rate is 59.12. The average taxable homestead residence is 193,902. At the proposed rate, the taxes for the year would be $1,090.70. At the effective tax rate, it would be $1,069.18, with a difference of $21.52.
Any questions by council?
Is that what we're doing? Is it a public hearing?
No, first we ask for questions, and I'll have a public hearing.
Would you repeat, Ms. Yarborough? I don't see it in my documentation. The average house and the average.
The average homestead residence is 193,902.
It's right here. Is it there? Okay, sorry. Don't need to repeat it then, I just didn't see it. And they would see a tax increase of about $21.52.
Yes.
What's the actual overall, not by per house, but overall difference between the rate that we're proposing and the effective rate? What's the, how much less would we be collecting?
The dollars.
Yes, dollars. If we did the.
How much less?
Yes.
It's averaging about 145,000 or maybe a little higher because of the frozen. We don't have the exact dollars on those. It would impact those, and we would have to get that information from the appraisal office, because we don't know who falls in what tax rate.
But it wouldn't be a big variance off of 150,000? Is that what we're saying, roughly?
Probably 150, maybe 160.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay, if there's no more questions, this also calls for a public hearing, actually two. This will be the first. We'll open it at 6:24 on the proposed tax rate. Any member of the public wish to address, make comments? Everybody has money in your pocket? All right. If seeing none at 6:24, I will close the first of two public hearings on the proposed ad valorem tax rate. And I will ask our city attorney to read the statement, which must be read by law, the conclusion of this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The adoption of the proposed tax rate will occur through two separate readings of an ordinance, the first of which will occur on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, at 6:00 PM, followed by a second reading and final adoption of the ordinance on Tuesday, September 26th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Both readings and actions on the ordinance will occur here at City Hall, 701 Main Street.
Okay. So there's no action required at this time, as he just read. We will, as I mentioned and he reiterated, but there will be a second public hearing. And again, if you have questions in the meantime, you're welcome to email us. No action is required on this this evening.
Can I ask for something, though? Kind of in line with what I was asking Ms. Yarborough. City manager kind of made reference to offering this. Is there, is there, how difficult would it be, I guess, to see what options there would be if we were to adopt the effective tax rate? What sort of changes would you have to make to accommodate that? Maybe an explanation of what the effective tax rate is would be helpful also.
Sure. So just in conceptually, the effective tax rate is the tax rate that you would need to bring in the same amount of money that you did in the prior year. So if your values are going up, then your effective tax rate would be lower. And so that's what's happened in this instance. It's a little over a penny, I think. So you heard her talk about 150,000, $160,000. To the general fund, it's more like 120,000, because part of that is peeled off and goes to the debt service fund. Because your tax rate is two components, one's debt service and the other one's interest in sync, operation and maintenance. So if that's the direction of the council, that I could do that and bring you back just, you know, several ideas about how you would reduce the budget by 120,000 or find revenues in the equivalent that would allow you to do that, to bring it down to the effective rate.
So do I get, I guess that's what I would like to see. So I have to make a motion to make that direction?
Mr. City Attorney, is that something he can do under this item?
I don't think you can.
Okay.
But I think if there's kind of, however, which way you're comfortable with, if you want to get in that information, you have some options for the next meeting.
Because it's not really action, right? I mean, it's really just setting it up for.
For a future vote. I mean, this will come in your first ordinance reading that September 12th. And so you'll have, obviously, a time at that point to propose, you know, your action.
So let me be clear, if you don't mind, about what we're asking. Are we asking for the city manager and staff to find out what effect it would have on approximately each homeowner if we reduced it to the effective tax rate and the total dollar amount to the budget? He's already said the total dollar amount, right, to the budget?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Barudy is looking for is, how would we adjust or amend the existing budget to accommodate the lower tax rate at the effective rate?
Right.
So you would like some.
Basically, yeah. If we accept the effective rate, we make our budget unbalanced. So what would he suggest we do to put it back in balance if we accepted that rate? That's what I'm getting.
And I think we touched on that. I think Mr. Vogel touched on that last evening.
I did. I brought it up.
Yeah.
I'd like to add something to that consideration, because the way I look at it, if you do what you might suggest, then it looks to me like we'll have to pay for it the next year. So it looks to me like taking a penny away, and it's going to cost us two pennies next year. And I would appreciate some forward-looking as to what it might be in the next fiscal year beyond 2018.
Right. And here's, let me just, here's where I was going with it. So I agree with you there. But what we've seen in the last three years anyways, and probably prior, is we do those audits at the end of the year, and we find out we actually had a budget surplus, right? So I'm just, it's a small amount. It's a symbolic gesture more than anything, but it cuts into what amounts to future unbudgeted spending, because we roll that surplus into whatever the year that is, and we just spend it. And so I'm watching, so I'm not actually taking action, I'm just asking for what would be the option. And asking that question is fair, too, what you're talking about. You know, where does it hit us down the road?
Because we've got fire trucks we're saving for. That's where some of that surplus went.
Right.
It's not, it's not like it's things we don't need.
Right.
And the other thing is, I promise you, we're going to have to do something that we don't have in the budget every year.
It's just inevitable.
It's just going to happen. And, you know, for. And, you know, fortunately, we've had a little bit of cushion there.
So I don't know how much time that may take, but if it would satisfy the general...
I think we can bring that back before your next meeting.
Okay. So to keep it in line with where we are, I think it does relate to the tax rate discussion. So if you could do that, we'd appreciate it. Do you, you know, you know your instruction there. Does that satisfy?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Everyone?
Me too.
Okay, good. All right. Item number 6A is the second reading of ordinance number 2017-16, annexing an approximate 11.341 acre tract out of the William Walt survey number 65. Abstract number 364, said territory being adjacent to the corporate city, corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas and generally located adjacent to property within the Comanche Trace Residential Subdivision, which is located along State Highway 173, describing the territory to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the territory annexed and establishing the zoning for the area annexed. And council, as you know, this is our second reading. We had the first reading last council meeting in which it was unanimously approved. Are there any questions for Ms. Kuntzel? No changes?
No changes, mayor.
Okay. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2017-16 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
If a motion is second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. You can have a drink of water now, Ms. Kuntzel. Okay. Item number 7A is a consideration and possible action on license agreement with the Calhoun Foundation for construction of a signaled intersection on Holdsworth Drive for fencing and for signage. Mr. Hoppe?
Good evening, mayor and council. We do have a license agreement on your agenda tonight. These were several items that, to my knowledge, were discussed prior to the property transfer of this property to the city. This is a gift from the Calhoun Foundation for several items, including traffic signalization on Holdsworth Drive, soccer fencing going predominantly around the area next to Holdsworth Drive and the initial part of Sweeper until you get to the parking lots, in addition to a monument sign to be located on the soccer side of the complex. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me list it as a gift that if anybody wished, you could move to discuss in executive session. Any motion? If not, we'll just do it now. Any questions for Mr. Hoppe?
Mr. Hoppe, I say it again about the monument sign. It's only on the soccer side?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, there's just one monument sign that's contemplated within the license premise. We're working with Calhoun Foundation on additional details on the baseball side of the complex. It is a different scenario on the baseball side because it does not directly abut Holdsworth Drive. And so there's private property that's located around there that we're continuing to work through some details, but we didn't want that to hold up this other important construction projects.
Just curious, what will the sign look like? Do you have an idea?
I do. Let me see if I can forward here. There you go.
I had, I had some questions that were answered already by Mr. McDaniel, but so that everybody will have the same information. In reading through the licensing agreement, you know, I asked if there was anything about warranty information, which we didn't, certainly we're held, you know, in no fault of any of the construction. But actually, it's just as Mr. Hoppe mentioned, it's a traffic light which has a one-year warranty. Mr. McDaniel said on it anyway. And the monument sign and the rest of it is fencing. So I don't think it's something that, you know, we have a lot to worry about that way. But I did ask the question. It is a one-year license agreement. To have time to finish it, I also asked, because I hadn't looked at it like I should have, but there's this portion where the fencing is, a buts fencing that's already existing. Am I right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
So that's why it only shows it briefly. And I did have an inquiry from a citizen who asked if we did a traffic study. No, but I can tell you, you're going to have a lot more traffic than you do now. And I think that's probably all you'd need to know at this point. So a traffic light is a great addition to that intersection.
And we are working with an independent traffic engineer on the turning movements in that location, making sure that that meets our standards.
Turn lanes?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be any pedestrian indicators?
Yes, ma'am. It is indicated to have pedestrian buttons there.
Tell me the, well, two questions. One is just a curiosity one. With this fencing, is, is the goal ultimately to have a surround the soccer side fence?
No, sir. This was predominantly to, you know, we, in discussions with the soccer organizations, there was some concern about the accessibility from the fields to Holdsworth Drive and so...
Like a safety concern?
Mostly a safety concern. That's right. It'll catch a few errant balls and hopefully keep...
Keep kids from running out.
Yes, sir.
And the traffic signal, I'm, I'm all for, obviously, you know, have at it, pay us to put the signal in. But what's the logic behind us not sort of driving the project and taking the gift as payment? You know what I'm saying? What's the reason for that?
It's just a different method of having those capital projects completed. You know, in this, in this instance, you know, we felt like time was a factor as well as, quite honestly, when the city bids a project, it tends to be more expensive.
Yeah, this would not be unlike when we work with the developer that's going to put a new store in or something like that. They, they put the signal in at their cost and then it's paid to the state or to the city. So it's typically part of their construction contract.
Okay, so they build it and then as soon as it's done, there's no hooks to it. It's just, it's just city infrastructure built in.
That's right. That's correct.
They have donated a number of things to Stryner University under similar kinds of understanding. And they, every one of them have been A double plus first rate.
This is going to be that nice kind that have an arm, don't, you know, hang on a wire across the road and meets all the text dot stuff? That was my question. I thought Holdsworth still belonged to text dot.
Yeah, I thought it did too, but...
Gave it to us. That's right.
We've leaned heavily on those text dot specifications to make sure...
But it'll, it'll all be to spec.
And I noticed that there is no up to a certain amount. So it just says, we'll get the job done. So that was, but the last question I would have is because it is going to be placed at a particular location, will it go to P&amp;Z for approval, the plat itself? And will there be public hearings as we normally require for that?
The plat for...
Well, for this whole area here. It will have to show on there where the monument's going, in particular where the fence is going.
There's no plat required for those pieces of infrastructure specifically.
Okay. Any other questions by council? Anyone else? All right. I would look for a motion to authorize city manager to execute a license agreement with the Calhoun Foundation for construction of a signaled intersection on Holdsworth Drive and for fencing and for signage as described.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, is second, all in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Item number 8A is a presentation on a new concept called My Ride Texas, which is a rideshare company. And before I try to describe what any of that legislation is about, I'm going to ask Steve Wright to come forward, if you will, and describe to us your new program and welcome.
Thank you very much for letting me come and discuss our company with you. As she stated, the rideshare company that we, we have is a company that folks, customers can download an app to their phone and by using this app, they can actually request a ride from one of our drivers anytime of the day or night, wherever they need to go, whether it's a grocery store, doctor's appointment or wherever it might be. They can use this app to, to request the ride at the time they need it. There's no, no reservations required or anything like that, no, no pre-planning. They can actually do it in the real time when they actually need it. We recruit our drivers from the public and they're free to go on and drive when they want to in their spare time and not drive when they don't want to. Just by a flip of a switch on their phone, they can be visible to anybody within a 15-mile radius of them. And anybody requesting a ride, it will actually show up a notification on their phone that says a passenger's requesting a ride and they can accept or decline the ride at that time. Once a, once a passenger requests a ride and a driver accepts it, then there's a detailed map from where the driver's at showing the passenger, the driver, en route to where they're actually being picked up at. Once the driver arrives and begins the actual trip, at that time, there's a map that shows up on the driver's phone that gives them detailed direction on where the passenger has put in for their destination. At the end of the ride, the driver slides it over to say that they've ended the ride and confirms. And at that time, they collect payment through the app. Everything is done through credit cards. There's no cash, no cash transactions. It is, it is confirmed and it collects the money through the app. And then at that point, an emailed receipt of the whole entire transaction, including a map of the ride, is emailed back to the driver and to the customer. So they can, they can actually have a record of where they were and what time of the day and how long it was and everything, such like that. We, we started, we're very similar to like your Uber and Lyft apps. In fact, our platform is almost identical. If somebody's used Uber or Lyft, they'll see that it's very similar. But we started out of a need for more safety. We noticed in a lot of the cities that Uber and Lyft were getting asked to leave because they didn't want to do background checks, check their drivers out, make sure that they were safe to be out transporting passengers. And so we decided to not only do the background checks. We're the only company that does face-to-face interviews with each driver that applies with us. And we're also the only company that does drug testing with that. So we state in all of our brochures and all our website that if you drive for My Ride TX, congratulations, you're one of the best because we've had to weed out a lot of people that didn't make the cut.
Can I ask you a question right there?
Absolutely.
You said we're the only company that does face-to-face interviews and background or drug tests. Are those not things that House Bill 100 required when they pass this?
They, they require the background checks. There's no provision there for drug screening or face-to-face interviews. So most of the rideshare companies, actually, a driver is able to take a picture of their driver's license and take a picture of their insurance card, submit their information to the rideshare companies. And basically through that, they'll do the background check and then give them approval without ever meeting somebody face-to-face or even confirming that that's actually the person that's, that's applying to drive with them. Where with us, like I said, we have the face-to-face interview and we've actually turned away quite a few people in other areas. We've, we've done the background checks and found everything from back-to-back DUIs to felony arrests for armed robbery. And these are actually people that are driving for some of the other rideshare companies. So our system's working. It's actually, I feel like it's making it safer. I did this out of a need. My, my daughter would go into one of the cities and use rideshares. And I asked her, who are these people? And she's like, I don't know. They just, we just go on and they show up and give us a ride. And it's like, I don't like that idea for my daughter to be doing that. So, so we, we decided to kind of go towards more of the safety factor for the passengers. And there's a lot of folks that just can't drive for us, they can't make the cut. So we're proud of the fact that we're, we're going to be one of the safest ones out there.
Mr. Wright, you might talk about the other markets that you're already in.
Yeah, we, we've launched in San Marcos. We're also currently operating very successfully in Fredericksburg. And it, which is, that's a unique situation. It's, I call it a transient customer base because it's such a tourist base. Every week, we're reinventing the wheel on getting new customers to know that we're there. We're in the, we've been invited to go to Wichita Falls and to Shepherd Air Force Base there at actual, their request. We're actually going to my original hometown of Clovis, New Mexico. There's also an air force base there that's actually asking us to do drives there. So we've got a number of cities that are actually asking us to, to go there and provide this service. We're kind of targeting areas where the big rideshare companies are either not serving or underserving because there is a need. There's, like I said, people need to go to the grocery store or they might have gone out and had a glass of wine with their dinner or something and they decide they don't want to drive. And that's exactly one of the things we want to help is to alleviate or cut down on people who've, who've had any, any kind of intoxicating beverages or anything and shouldn't be driving. So we're there for that reason also, so...
So what are the limits of service?
We set up a 15-mile perimeter. 15-mile. And like I said, if I was on as a driver right now and I said, I'm available and I have an hour I want to spend driving, anybody within that 15-mile radius requesting a ride would actually show up. Anybody we have on as a driver at that time will all be notified simultaneously. It's like a little 30-second dial that comes up on their phone that shows a ride request and they're all, it pings all of them at the same time. So the first one to say, I'm, I'm there, I'm on it. So it's in their benefit to accept the rides as quick as they can and actually let the customer know that they're en route.
So how do you do the, the drug testing? Are there services here? I think we have one on maybe Sydney Baker.
We, we actually do a five-panel, panel drug test during their interview. And it tests for the opiates, the barbiturates, the THC, the cocaine. You know, it's a, it's a five-panel mouth swab drug screening that we do right there on site.
And then ongoing?
Yep. And, and our policy too is if anybody was to call us and say, hey, I think my driver might have been under the influence of something, our driver has 24 hours to report in for a retest. If they do not comply with that, they're automatically forfeiting their right to use our platform. So we don't mess around with it. If somebody feels like, hey, our driver might not have been up to the standards we require, then we will actually, with a flip of a switch, we can make them no longer a driver, actually.
If, if somebody volunteered to drive who lives in Hunt, that'd be a different 15-mile perimeter, right?
Yep. So we, 15 miles from the city is pretty much, you know, kind of the center of town. And like I said, we're growing. Ultimately, we're going to be a network of rideshare companies, if you can imagine, a network of companies that we're all connected. So a passenger who downloads the app here, let's say they decide they're going to go up to Fredericksburg for a night and they need a ride there, that app will work there as well as in here. Now, if, if that passenger goes to a city where we don't currently have service and they request a ride, it'll just say, no cars available at this time, which is similar to what the other companies do.
I applaud your safety thoughts and implementations. How does that, how much does that impact the cost to the customer?
Well, it's kind of funny because we are a mom and pop operation. It's me, my wife and one of my sons are the, are the actual founders and operators of the company. Most of it's, in this type of company, is done online. I mean, we can, we can actually...
I'm very familiar with rideshare companies.
Exactly. So we actually, we actually are charging less than the other companies, okay? And we actually keep less. They're keeping anywhere from 25 to 28 percent of the other companies. Ours is averaging 16 to 18 percent of the shareable fare. So we're, we're charging less and we're keeping less. So our drivers actually make more. So if you took a, if you took two drivers side by side, one was driving for Uber and one was driving for us and they went to the same point, our driver's actually going to make more but our customer's actually paying less.
Well, I, I urge you to consider that a little bit more and keep more for yourself because I want you to stay around.
Sure, sure.
The drivers are mobile. You're not quite so mobile.
Absolutely.
You need to be sure your business makes money from the get-go.
Sure, sure.
You didn't mention a rate. Is there a set rate, isn't it?
Yes, actually, anything within a four-mile radius is, and we will do some research in each, each location we go to, but it's averaged at about $6 and that's up to four passengers. There's no add-on for each passenger. So it would be a $6 fare, so within about a four-mile radius. And after that, there's a 10 cent a minute and 89 cents a mile fee, which is also, like I said, considerably less than the other people. It's usually less than any of the taxi cabs that, that will charge also. So we, we want it to be a win across the board for, for the drivers and the customers.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. The first one is, did I hear, what's your name again?
My name is Steve Wright.
Oh, Wright.
Wright.
I thought maybe it was like a birthright that his name was Wright.
Oh, I wish. That would be, that's asking too much.
So, okay.
Yeah. No, Steve Wright.
So a couple of things. One, with that ride rate, so, because I drove a cab. So if a person gets in the car and they say they want to go to San Antonio, your drivers have to say no?
Well, actually, they'll request that upfront. And when, when somebody requests a ride, let's say you're a passenger and you say, man, I need to get to the San Antonio airport and you put that ride request in, our, our drivers can, will see that upfront. And if they're like, oh, I've only got 30 minutes till I have a meeting, I can't do that, then they would never accept the ride. So you're not going to have a driver show up and then all of a sudden, the last second, go, I can't do that.
Is there a flat fee for it or like a predetermined fee or does the driver negotiate?
Oh, no, no, no. There's no negotiating. Whenever the passenger puts in their destination, it calculates from the point they're at to the destination they want to go to. And at the bottom of our app, it says fare estimate. And you, they can touch on that and it will show exactly what that fare is going to be from the point they're wanting to go to the other. And the driver has no consideration in that whatsoever. It's already predetermined.
And then the other question is more taxes. Where do the taxes go from the ride? The, you know, the, you know, if I got a ride, it's 15-mile radius takes us out of Kerrville.
Yeah.
So where does that go?
Right now, the state doesn't have provisions for sales tax on this. And that's one of the things that I think they're hoping that when they finalize the bill and everything, they'll be, it's kind of ambiguous right now. Uber and Lyft pay no sales tax to anywhere.
Okay.
Which is kind of strange because it's a service, you would think. But, you know, I didn't write those rules. But that's, I'm hoping they address that more when they finalize their, their bill on that.
I just had one quick thing and we'll wrap up, I guess. Mr. Hayes, are there any legal, I'd like you to make just a quick statement about how we can or cannot regulate this, because there's bound to be questions from, from the community. And you've already answered me, but for the public.
Well, Mr. Wright alluded to this House bill. House Bill 100 completely removed any sort of authority for cities to regulate the service. And so a number of cities have done that, or, you know, had ordinances in place to regulate rideshare, and they've been preempted, and so...
And if you don't mind me interject on that, I, I firmly believe, I would rather work with a community and work with what they like to see and play nice and do just like we're doing here and hopefully set it up in a, in a way that you, you guys approve of, as opposed to just coming in saying, guess what, I can be here because the state says I can. I don't, I don't agree with that at all. And so that's our, that's our reason for being here, is to say, hey, we're, we want to do it the way you guys like. I know in Fredericksburg, they wanted magnets on the sides of our car that says My Ride TX, and it has our website on there. And we totally complied. It's like, absolutely. It's been a great thing too, actually, because it's, it's free advertising. So we, we want to, you know, work with, with the cities instead of working around them. I think it works better for everybody involved if we can do that.
Okay, so leave your business card with Mr. Hayes and we'll be in touch with what we need.
Yeah, and Mr. Koenig, so he can join the chamber too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Did you, we'll pass cards out at the end. Any questions, any further from the council? How about from the audience? Oh, let's, Mr. Ward.
What?
Would you step to, I'm sorry, we have to, y'all line up there if you want to ask something, please. Folks, if you want to speak, would you line up behind Ward? Okay.
Ward Jones, 2126, Buffridge. What limits do you require in terms of insurance coverage for your drivers and what excess limits does the company carry?
Okay, that's a good one. We carry a commercial policy with a million dollars per occurrence. It's, it's a commercial policy through the company. We also require every driver to get a rideshare addendum to their personal insurance. It costs them about $8, $8 to $10 a month on average, but it is like super insurance. So basically, if they have a passenger in their car and anything was to happen whatsoever, it's covered through this rideshare insurance addendum. And so we require that our drivers have that. And we've even had some drivers that even switched to insurance companies because the company they have did not offer that. They switched and it's working out fine, so that is a requirement.
And your minimum age, the driver?
We've been at 21. The state is saying 18 now. I'm, I don't know. We, I prefer to recruit 21. And in, in any particular city, if we can do that and get enough coverage, enough drivers to sign up, that would be my preference.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Ms. Litscomb?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Wright? Okay, like Mary did. Okay. Peggy.
Peggy McKay, P.O. Box 291464, Kerrville. Those who do not have a phone where they can download an app cannot be accommodated?
Good question. We actually are working on a manual dispatch system within our program, so that is something that definitely will happen down the road, where somebody could call in, they could preset up their account. Like I said, everything is done through a credit card, a secured credit card company, so we're not passing cash back and forth. But once that actually takes place, then they would be able to call in and say, this is, you know, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so, and I need a ride, and we would be able to manually dispatch that. So that is something that actually is in the works at this time.
Very good, very good questions. If that's all the questions, we thank you so much for joining us today, and we've all seen things about this, and I know there have been questions from the community, so we appreciate that and we'll be looking forward to your service.
Well, thank you as well. I appreciate it.
By the way, there's hundreds of B&amp;Bs in Fredericksburg that you can advertise through.
We like those, yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number 8B is budget and economic update. Ms. Yarborough.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the budget update as of July 31st. In the general fund for the month of July, we had revenues of $1,277,799. Our year-to-date revenue is $26,182,190. Our expenditures in the general fund for the month of July was $2,220,967, with our year-to-date of being $22,592,860. And again, to remind you all, it is up over last year due to the budget amendments we had earlier in the year, one in January and one in April. And, excuse me, in the water fund, the revenue for the month was $1,111,720. Our year-to-date was $9,542,816. Our expenditures was $951,246, and our year-to-date was $9,434,239. In the hotel motel fund, we had revenue of $121,152. Our year-to-date was $996,883. Our expenditures for the month was $25,000, and our year-to-date was $781,450. In the economic side, there is the update on the most current or most active projects going on, showing their project budget, the activity during the month, our project-to-date expense, and our project balances. At the bottom, under development activities, we had three new resident permits issued in the month of July, and commercially, we had $130,863 in, in new and improvements on the commercial side. In the housing market, the inventory is staying fairly constant, and the, and the